Today's date is April 26, 2023. I call the April meeting of the Suffolk Village of Suffolk Planning Board to order. The time is 7:01. Let's rise for the Page Allegiance.
Page Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and is a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. My first up on the agenda is a sign application for La Motto Latina Sammy, the applicant.
They're not here. It's just a re-letter.
Okay. From the building inspector, they have a certificate of use and a current fire safety certificate, and they are using the existing sign, just replacing, obviously, the verbiage and colors. Does anybody have any comments or questions about the sign application? Do I have a motion to approve the sign application for La Motto Latina Sammy?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mr. McInerney. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Dale. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Second on the agenda, Priya India, Indian Cuisine, DBA, the best diner. Again, it's another sign application.
I think this is them right here.
For Priya?
Priya.
Can I please state your name and address for the record?
Shaimi Jacob, 36 Lafayette Avenue, Suffolk, New York, 10901.
So just please let us know, you know, what your plans are with the sign.
So we are going to convert this into a diner. So we're going to change the name. So it's going to be the same corporation, same tax ID, everything else is the same. So we have the existing name literally going to change. The only change would be the main sign. It will currently, it's 24 feet, I mean, 24 inches high, and that will be changing to 30 inches because of the logo. That's the only change, but the rest of them is exactly the same. Instead of the name, it's going to be a different name. So instead of Adraka, it's going to be the best diner.
Okay. And I do see from the building inspector, you have a certificate of use. However, the fire safety certificate expired on March 31st, and you did pay the fee for the inspection. It just hasn't happened yet?
Yes. I think Adam did stop by, but I, you know, we're just waiting for it.
Okay. All right. So any questions or comments on any of this? Do I have a motion to approve the sign application for Priya Indian Cuisine, DBA, the best diner?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mr. McInerney. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Van Sickle. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Best of luck to you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, next up.
You guys have a good day.
You too. Thank you. Next up is a public hearing for IV2 Rockland Logistics LLC for their draft environmental impact statement. Hey, you want to come up, Mr. Judge Vadia?
Sure. Sure. Good evening. My name is Darius Chepezeda, attorney at Power Speech Law Firm here for the owner and developer IV Logistics, Rockland Logistics. This is the DEIS public hearing. As you know, we have been working with your team of planners and experts on finalizing the DEIS. It was before your board last month, and it was deemed complete for a public comment. Since that time, we have sent out all the required notices to the various interested and involved agencies. We've also sent it out to the required bulletin to the Department of Environmental Conservation. So we wanted to walk you through just quickly for the public, if anyone's here and hasn't seen the project before. I know the board has, or at least most of you have, just a quick little proposal of what we're proposing for the project. We'll have Ryan McDermott from Dynamic Engineering here. We do have our team here from the owner and also from our planner, if there's any questions. Our plan tonight, we have our stenographer here taking down everything, will provide a copy to the village once it's complete, but it's not to try to get in a back and forth with the public on questions and answers, but get all the questions down on the steno and then try to respond to those in the FEIS, working with your planners during this hearing, if that's okay with the board.
Perfect. Thank you.
Great. Ryan?
Again, for the record, my name is Ryan McDermott, M-C-D-E-R-M-O-T-T, civil engineering consultant on behalf of the applicant with Dynamic Engineering. The plan you see before you, this is a variation of what this board has seen before, just updated with the latest and greatest plan set. It's a colorized version of the site plan sheet and overall site plan rendering, colorized with proposed landscaping, so you can kind of see the differential. On a larger site, it's kind of hard to tell with black and white lines what's going on. So this is a, you know, a more clear depiction of what we're proposing. So as you heard from Darius, the applicant has submitted a draft environmental impact statement for the proposed redevelopment of a warehousing and logistics center on the site which was formerly occupied by the Novartis manufacturing facility on Old Mill Road. That DEIS has been submitted, reviewed by the board's professionals, and revised to address comments from the board professionals. So we are here tonight to hear comments from the public, take inventory of what those comments and concerns might be, and then work towards a final EIS wherein all feedback will be thoroughly assessed and addressed. The project consists of demolishing the existing complex and constructing three Class A modern warehouse distribution facilities consisting of a total gross floor area of approximately 1.2 million square feet. Additional improvements will include loading bays for each of those buildings, trailer storage spaces, lighting, landscaping, utilities, stormwater management facilities, drive aisles, parking, et cetera. The site is located within the PLI Planned Light Industrial Zoning District where the use is permitted as of right. A special use permit will be required from the planning board for disturbance within a portion of the site which lies in the Suffolk Floodplain Overlay Zoning District. Furthermore, a portion of the site is located within the Village of Montebello off to the east side, which is the right side of this plan. However, we are not proposing any buildings or site improvements within the Village of Montebello. Access to the site is currently provided via a full movement driveway at the southern end of the site along Hemian Road, if you could follow my finger right here, and a full movement driveway at the northern end of the site along Old Mill Road, which eventually connects out to Hemian here. It is proposed to maintain both of those driveways and add a second full movement driveway on Old Mill Road. It is important to note that recently Old Mill Road was owned by the New York State Throughway Authority. However, as recently as this week, the applicant has closed on Old Mill Road and now owns the roadway. It's the intent to continue using Old Mill Road for a primary access point as the applicant's predecessors on this site have for decades. That concludes a brief overview of the site of what we're proposing. Again, this really has remained largely the same as the board has seen it presented over the past several months, but we did want to, you know, provide a brief summary for the public that might be here for this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have the representatives from Nelson Pope, if he'd like to make your comments, and then we'll open up the public hearing?
Public portion. Just move it to the side. Great. Thank you very much. My name's Bill Brady, again with Nelson Pope Voorhees, town's planning consultant on this matter. And just to refresh everyone that the public comment period is going to be open until May 8th. So again, public, if they're not even, if they're not speaking here tonight, they still have that time to submit comments to the village, and those will be accepted as well. And again, the planning board is more than welcome to submit comments as well on the matter. So thank you very much, and will help to answer any questions to as things come on. Thanks.
I'm sorry, Bill. So I know we had this discussion, the, obviously, the public hearing is taking place tonight. Your recommendation is the public hearing be closed, but public comments will still be able to come in until the 8th, and then we'll go from there in terms of the DEIS and having the applicant address the issues raised there.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Ryan.
Do I have a motion to open the public portion of the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mr. Halper. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. McInerney. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Does any members of the public who'd like to speak, please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Jim Janatino, my only question is, are the plan is satisfied with the plan as it sits?
We'll take the question.
Excuse me? So you haven't made a final decision?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All I can say, I was a member of this board for a long time. This is a professional company. They've done everything I ever asked them when I was chairman, and I'm glad to see they got Old Mill Road, and they're on their way, and I wish them luck.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Ms. Wooters, again, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Patricia Wooters. That's W-O-O-T-E-R-S, and I welcome this project as the Village of Suffolk as a resident and taxpayer. And in looking at it, I have two small requests. The executive summary reports the potential impact of losing 534 trees that are 12 inches in diameter or more, and that there would be 534 trees planted, which is wonderful. And I understand they will not be planting trees of equivalent size. That would be ridiculous. But I'm asking that the oak tulip tree forest be replanted with similar trees that are already found there. American beech, red maple, red oak, tulip tree, black oak, white oak. I get this from the draft DEIS that I read. And where are suitable plantings to recreate the red maple hardwood swamp and floodplain forest, similar trees? What I'm asking is the replacement trees not be ornamental cherry trees, calorie, you know, pear trees, but actually trees that will eventually provide shade. I'm looking for shade. I'm looking at climate change, and I know you are as well. I can see that from what you've said, and that's wonderful. The village will be losing mitigation from climate change by so expanding the built environment footprint. So this is important that as many acres of forest shade can be replaced over the long term. I know it takes time for trees to grow. And the other request that I have, I salute the fact that the buildings will have white covering on top, which I don't know, that may be code in Suffolk, I don't know, but I'm asking in addition that the roadways be coated with reflective paint to, again, mitigate against the enlarged footprint and coming climate change. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who'd like to speak? And up, Mr. Millman, Mayor Millman from Montebello. We do have the letter that was dropped off yesterday afternoon. I have read it. We haven't had time to discuss it, but by all means, feel free to make your comments.
Okay. So once again, my name is Lance Millman. I'm the mayor of the Village of Montebello. We have been involved in certain aspects of this project, here tonight with Richard DeAndrea, our village traffic consultant from Colliers Engineering Design. I'm going to let Mr. DeAndrea talk first, and if the board will let me finish off with my comments afterwards.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Richard DeAndrea, Colliers Engineering and Design. You mentioned that you had our letter that was submitted to you. It was dated, I think it was April 12th was the date.
21st.
21st, sorry. And, you know, I'm not going to go through every point that's in there, because we did submit that in writing. We would expect that that would be addressed as part of the FEIS, but there are some bigger items that I think we would just like to highlight for you. There were a couple of things in the scoping document that we didn't see that were fully addressed. Maybe we missed them. It is a large document, so there's a couple of things in there that you'll see. Getting more into the technical things, you know, we had some questions about the distributions of traffic, especially to and from the throughway. They're only showing 10% of their traffic to and from there. We think that that is a low percentage, and maybe that needs to be adjusted a little bit to know what the true impacts are. We did question the build year that was utilized in the traffic analysis. They used the build year of 2024. That seems significantly aggressive, especially since they're showing a 22-month, I think it's 22-month construction timeframe at this point, considering where we are in 2023, 2024. It seems like an aggressive build year, so that may need to be adjusted and reanalyzed a little bit. We do have significant concerns about, basically, the mitigation measures they're proposing at 59 and Hemian and 59 and Armont Road are basically timing changes. There's some other modifications to, at the Hemian intersection, to increase storage length. The timing changes, we have significant concerns about whether or not those are realistic, whether they can be implemented. We really think that DOT input is necessary to know that those can be made, and that we haven't seen yet. We continue to have concerns about the left turn from 59 onto Armont Road. I think everybody knows that is a queuing issue today. You're going to add more vehicles, more trucks to that left turn with this project. So that is something that, again, needs Department of Transportation input on. Again, going back to the intersection of 59 and Hemian, those, they're proposing to extend the storage length of left turn lanes there. We would like to see how they want to accomplish that. They say it's going to be restriping only. I'm not clear that that's, it's just restriping that gets that done. We would like to see a full plan in conceptual form that shows that. I think site distances along Hemian Road for both the access points at Hemian need to be looked at. Those weren't addressed in the study. I think those are critical, especially for trucks coming in and out of the site. And then the DEIS appendix does show a plan with truck turning maneuvers for the southerly access driveway that shows what appears to be significant improvements along that southerly access driveway and at the access driveway at Hemian Road. I don't see those mentioned anywhere in the study. I think the presentation tonight indicated that there are no improvements in the Village of Montebello that, although that's a county roadway on Hemian, it is within the village, and there's other, if they are improving that driveway, those would be within the Village of Montebello. Couple other things, there was a separate analysis done considering potentially higher traffic generation was something that we had actually requested earlier on. You know, one of the things that we have done in the past, and the state has done in the past, is a, what's called a post-monitoring study that is done after occupancy of the development to assess what the real traffic generation is after the project's been occupied. As part of that, you would assess specific items which they identified in the study that could be potential improvements after the fact that may need to be made. That could be something that is done here as part of any approvals, and I think is warranted, especially with some of the things that they've identified in the study for that condition. And then we had several other comments about just the construction traffic analysis. They are saying that they're going to bring in a lot of fill material to the project to make this work. There's some assumptions in there that we didn't see clearly identified how they got to that analysis, who would like those clarified. And there was no real discussion about the actual construction worker traffic in there. When you look at the timeframe of construction worker traffic coming in and out of the site, especially leaving the site, it's going to be pretty much coincident with the peak hour that they identified for the PM peak hour, which was 3:15 to 4:15. So we think that maybe an additional analysis there needs to be looked at to make sure that there's no other, no impacts from that end of things. Understanding, we understand that it's temporary, but maybe the timing changes that they're recommending, if they can be implemented, need to be done before the construction starts in full bore. So, and then lastly, I would just mention that, you know, if there are improvements along that southerly axis or out on Hemian, we would expect that they would have to come to the Village of Montebello Planning Board for those improvements, so that at some point in the future, we may have, you know, further review on that portion of the project. That's all I have for now, and I'll hand it back to the mayor.
Thank you. First, I just wanted to say that the Village of Montebello is thrilled with the new owners of the property. We know they're an extremely reputable company, and they will do everything possible and have been as transparent as possible with what they're doing to both Suffolk and to Montebello. And we applaud that, that both Suffolk and Montebello has been involved. Granted, majority of, I mean, all of the building is in Suffolk, and we know that's in good hands with you, board, sir. Where we've been involved even before this is that when the first traffic study came out, we actually hired Colliers to review it immediately, even before we were involved, and we sent it over to, I think, both the planning board and to the applicant, and they did take a bunch of suggestions from there. But the main concern of Montebello since day one is the traffic, the flow of the traffic, the anticipated, and I know it's not 225 trucks a day, the anticipation of 18-wheelers. And it's not just the anticipation of originally going through Montebello, but the anticipation of going on a county road to a state road to another state road to parts of town of Ramapo and Armont, where I've lived in my village for over 26 years, and all the improvements that have been said to occur to Armont Road haven't really occurred, and everybody's really aware of that. I think the biggest improvement was they added soft noise controls over by the railroad tracks, so that would be, so that would lessen the sound. We know that this is a major project and that it is good for the Village of Suffolk, town of Ramapo, Village of Montebello, the county, and everybody else involved. There'll be anticipated, we were told, and I don't know if it's exact number, 1,500 cars of employees, not coming at the same time, but coming into the area. In reviewing with our traffic consultant and reading and having discussions, we are still extremely concerned about Hemian Road and Montebello Road, Hemian Road and Route 59, Route 59 and Armont, the throughway exits, the potential cars that is our understanding, and I think the applicant has agreed and the county has agreed in theory that trucks would be right turned only, so there won't be any left turns going into Montebello onto roads that cannot hold those size of trucks. But there still could be hundreds of employees coming through the Montebello area, passing the middle school that involves the students of Suffolk, Montebello, town of Ramapo, Armont, all the areas, and the buses are coming all throughout different parts of the day. There was one part where, in theory, and I understand that from a, I guess, a logistics engineering point of view, the Hemian Road and Montebello Road with an always stop sounds nice in theory, but you have a road that's coming up hills from a winding road in front of a middle school across from another complex that it would be almost impossible to do anything like that. And the widening of the road with the throughway overpass over there is not something that should ever be, you know, considered. We've had some concerns that they spoke about making, I think it's called the storage part of the road on Hemian Road, you know, for the left turns. There's Indian Rock Shopping Center there, and there's the Indian Rock community of housing that's there. If that is extended backwards and 18-wheelers are going to be sitting there until they can make the turn, the visibility out of the Indian Rock Shopping Center is going to be hindered, and I don't even know if it's going to go back as far as the Indian Rock Shopping Center. That's why our engineer is asking for expanding views of the plan in doing this. So once again, our main concern, and it's not just the Village of Montebello, I mean, Armont and 59 affects everybody in this room and everybody surrounding. And Hemian Road to Route 59 is a main road that leads across the street to Good Sam Hospital, where emergency vehicles may need to come through. The last thing we need is the potential of having 18-wheelers blocking the way and having not to go around. I actually had a resident of Suffolk who I know called me the other day, said, "I saw 18-wheelers turning from Hemian onto Route 59, and they couldn't make the turn, and everybody knows they're going to have to do something with the turn radius. They had to go up on the sidewalk to make the turn." Well, that's not acceptable to anybody. So I just wanted to reiterate the importance of this aspect of this project. We in no way want the project to be stopped. We think it is good for everybody, but we don't want to become the Rockland County hub being surrounded by 18-wheelers coming in many directions. Even across from Village Hall, we have another project that's been approved, Light Industrial, that I think is going to have anywhere from 25 to 50 more 18-wheelers. And then there's the expansion of Raymore and Flanagan, okay, which is also going to be utilizing their train, you know, tracks coming across. So as my village attorney said to me, this isn't just a moment in time, this is a moment in the future that everybody has to take into consideration how this traffic flow and the impact it will have on the entire area. And that is why I am here tonight, and I know you know it's important to us, and we know that you're very important to this whole project, and we want you to carefully consider to make sure that these answers are given so that everybody is satisfied. The changing of the timing of the lights, never going to do it. I mean, it won't change anything. If you were coming on Route 59 to Armont Road during parts of the day, it's 50 cars backed up already. So we'll add a lane with a couple 18-wheelers or something, and the last thing I have to say is that they're going to have to take over, if they're going to widen the part of the road, take over parts of businesses and properties, not only by us, Hemian and 59, but Armont Road with Armont, with town of Ramapo. So I thank you for listening to us tonight. I know you know this is extremely important. We are once again extremely happy with the new applicants, you know, in this type of property, but everything has to be done to the satisfaction of not just today's living, of the living in the next 25 years, 50 years, what the impact will be. I thank you very much.
Great. Thank you for your comments. And then just so you know, we do take it very seriously. I got this yesterday, and as Mr. Janatino said, the applicant has been very responsive. to suggestions and things of that nature. I believe that you are an involved agency.
Yeah, we are, we are now.
Didn't we do that last year?
No, uh, yes, yes.
Okay. So, I mean, we look forward to working, we want to be good neighbors. I believe that, uh, you know, Rockland Logistics wants to be a good neighbor. So we look forward to working with you and, you know, transparency and you're right, this is a long-term impact and we do look forward to, you know, coming up with, with hopefully suitable solutions if we get that far.
I thank you again, Mr. Chairman and your board. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else, any other members of the public who would like to speak? Do I have a motion to close the public portion of this hearing?
Make a motion.
Motion, Mr. Dale, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. McInerney, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Do you have any responses? Does the applicant have any responses to any of the comments that you'd like to share?
I don't, I don't think we want to get into the details right now. We will respond to them in the draft FDIS and get it to Nelson Pope for their review. Uh, but, you know, I don't want to get into a back and forth and things, but we hear your comments, we got the letter, we are reviewing it with our traffic consultants and we will be, you know, responsive. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. And the, uh, you know, we are accepting public comments until May the 8th. So, you know, this is not done, it's not over. And, and this is a DEIS, it's a draft environmental impact statement. It belongs to the applicant and now we go through the review process and again, we will work with, with all the stakeholders and, uh, again, they've been very responsive and we'll go from there. But I mean, this is not done yet by any stretch of the imagination, we're just getting started.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any, any members of the board have any questions, comments?
Okay, so, uh, again, procedurally, we mentioned at this point it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to close the public hearing, um, the DEIS. And, um, again, as the chairman mentioned, their public comment will be held open until May 8th, uh, and then we'll proceed from there with addressing the comments. So, um, again, unless anybody has any questions or, or comments, at this point it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mr. McInerney, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Van Sickle, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, local law, number four of 2023, amending section 266-38 of the zoning code with respect to special parking requirements in the, uh, Central Business District. It's a recommendation to the village board. Mr. Magrino, would you like to go over the local law?
Sure. So, uh, as we did last time, when the village board is entertaining local laws related to zoning, uh, it must refer the matter to the planning board for its comment. This matter, um, really relates specifically to the planning board. The change in the code, uh, is that currently, um, in the CB district, of course, parking is an issue, so, uh, certain standards may be waived at the current time by the planning board, uh, if the applicant conveys a permanent easement or dedication in fee for a parking area shown on the parking area map. Uh, the change in the code is that this decision will now be with the village board of trustees as opposed to the planning board. So, um, that's really what the change is and it's here for if the board wishes to, um, provide comment, input, um, or stand mute.
Anybody have any comments?
I have a question. Is the formulate supposed to be used in the decision after we make this change been developed or is it something different that they haven't mentioned?
I can't, I didn't hear, I didn't hear. Is what?
Is the formulate to be used to determine the amount of parking spaces to be added using the same calculations that we're used to or is it something new under this agreement?
Yeah, the only, the only change is who makes the determination as to whether or not to waive the standards. And instead of the planning board, it's now, it would be the village board.
The planning board is not going to have a meeting on this at all?
No.
It's going straight to the village board.
The village board is adopt, adopts the local law, so.
You're just hoping that the village business is getting notified of what's coming.
Well, that's their... Bring it up with the board, as they say, the village board.
There, there was a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce yesterday, by the way, so. Any other questions or comments?
Do you want to make a comment? Do you want to just?
I, personally, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with what they're proposing. Um, you know, I've read it, I understand it.
That's if the board, does the board wish to make a comment or do you want to just, uh, you know, provide no comment?
Alleviate us of the responsibility in terms of that decision, no problem.
Okay, you want to say the board has no objection to the change?
The, everybody okay with that?
Yes.
So the board has no objection to the, to this change?
You want to just take a motion on that?
Do we have a motion to send that recommendation and provide that comment?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mr. Halper, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Dale, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next on the agenda, is there any old business anybody would like to discuss?
The minutes.
Yeah, I know, that's not on there, so do that next.
Yeah, that's, I put it under old business on mine so that we would be able to get it done.
All right, do we have a motion to adopt the minutes for the Wednesday, March 29th, 2023 Planning Board meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mr. McInerney, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Halper, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Is there any new business anybody would like to discuss on the board? Any miscellaneous business? Okay, um, the, we've got to set the date for the May meeting, which I believe would be the 17th of May at 7:00 PM. Uh, is there any reason that we want to delay it to the following week or no, it's nothing? We've got to send out?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Unless anybody here wishes to, for any reason.
I don't think so. Do I have a motion to set the May 2023 meeting for the planning, Village of Suffolk Planning Board to May 17th at 7:00 PM?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mr. McInerney, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Halper, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Do I have a motion to close the meeting? Adjoin the meeting? Do you guys want to stay here?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. McInerney, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Halper, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, the meeting is adjourned.